It's time to get cranked up now. There's four of us up here tonight, uh, there's actually five because we've got Chris Parrott in this box right here. Hey, Chris, can you hear us okay?
I hear ya, hey, all right.
Santa Claus is still looking for you to bring those bags of switches, Chris, but we'll be waiting here.
Oh, good.
Uh, I will ask you from time to time, Chris, to be sure that you're, that you're, uh, still on here with us. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started now. We are gonna do a continued public hearing. And, uh, if our attorney, please be kind to get up and continue this hearing.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have two public hearings this evening. Before I get started with those, I'd like to let everyone know that the City of Tipton's written public hearing procedures, the City of Tipton Standards for Exercise of Zoning Powers, a copy of Georgia Conflict of Interest Laws are available as a handout and are also posted. Uh, the first public hearing we're having tonight is a continuation of the public hearing that we had up until September nineteenth regarding an application by the City of Tipton, which is TA thirteen dash zero 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 dash zero zero four, uh, seeking to amend the Land Development Code in three respects. The first one is to amend Chapter Four of the Standards for Lot Area and Width, provide for the maximum impermeable lot coverage for non-residential lots, being controlled by Section four point oh eight oh four B two, requiring ten percent of the total gross land area of the landscape, to increase the maximum of the permeable area of residential property to fifty percent, and to amend Section four point oh eight oh four B two, to include any buffer of the ten percent landscaping required for non-residential property. Also seek to amend the Land Development Code by amendment Chapter Four, Section four point oh one oh two C two, to reduce the side yard setback requirement from seventy-five percent of that required for the front yard setback to fifty percent for corner lots and commercial rezoned areas. And finally, to amend Chapter Two, Table two point oh three point oh three, table abuses, to add inert landfills as a land use to be permitted in heavy industrial and wholesale light industrial zoning districts. Since this is not a reclassification of zoning, I will not need to qualify the council as to conflict of interests. And prior to taking any comments from public, I'll ask Mr. Crowe if he would come and give us the staff report, the staff recommendation.
Chris, are you able to, to hear the conversation so far?
Yes, I did, I heard it.
Okay.
Um, we had been, uh, made a request made, uh, by staff to, uh, from staff and from that council at one point, to increase these three different areas that we talked about. One is the allowable impermeable area, the other is the setback requirements on side of corner lots, and the third is the reclassification of inert landfill, uh, this is discussed previously. Um, it was approved unanimously, all three points, by the plan of zoning. It is also the desire of staff for this to be done, and that is our recommendation. Any questions?
All right, at this time, I would ask, uh, have public input on this particular zoning, uh, these text amendments. Is there anyone here that would, uh, like to speak in favor of these text amendments? Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to these text amendments? There, I see no public input on that particular, uh, public hearing matter that, that, that we closed.
Okay, which one?
The second, uh, public hearing tonight has to do with applications ZA one three dash zero zero dash zero zero six and ZA one three dash zero zero dash zero zero seven. Uh, this is a request of the Oaks and Carpenter in Mill Ridge subdivisions, requesting amendment to their planned unit overlays, to allow the purchase and transfer of a lot located parcel number zero zero three, three two E, one four five, for the Mill Ridge subdivision development, the Oaks and Carpenter development, for the purpose of instructing a sales rental office for both developments. Again, since this is not a reclassification of zoning, I will not need to, uh, qualify councils for conflict of interest. Again, I'd ask Mr. Crowe to come up and speak to these issues prior to taking the public hearing.
Thank you. Um, we received a request from both of the owners and developers of both of those planned development overlays, both Mill Ridge and Oaks, for slight modification to both plans. What it would be is basically taking one lot, that parcel number zero zero three two E, one four five, from the Mill Ridge subdivision, and actually replacing it in the Oaks subdivision. That lot is actually bordered right up to the Oaks parcel. It's a corner parcel. Um, for the purpose of building a good purpose, uh, sales and rental office for both projects. The person owning the development Oaks is also actually developing, doing a housing in the Oaks and, um, Mill Ridge. And it just was a very beautiful lot for that area that borders already what would be office residential across the street. Um, it, it was, it was a work all the way around for everybody. It was, uh, it was recommended a hundred percent and voted unanimously from plan of zoning, and the staff recommendation is for approval.
All right, Chris.
All right, at this time, I'll take any public input relative to these two applications. Is there anyone here that would like, like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application, these There, I see no public input of these applications. I'm asking, public, can you close?
It is closed. We'd like now to thank y'all for being here. It's always nice to see a room full. I know there's a few of y'all sitting out there, and this is my young man this morning. I think that's a pleasure. In fact, I've heard your baby say "goat dad" a couple times. So, uh, uh, we start off with a prayer and a pledge, and I'm gonna say the prayer, and this is the first month of the year. When I get through, we'll, we'll stand up and face this great American flag that we all love, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So, if y'all would just join me in prayer, please. Dear Father, we just, we thank you that, that we're Americans. We thank you that we live in a free society, a free country, a wonderful country, Father, founded on biblical, Christian principles. And Father, we thank you that we were able to still pray in a meeting such as this. It, it emphasizes the word freedom. And Father, we just thank you for all that you do for us, for each and every family that's represented out here, uh, tonight, uh, you know, to give us all a good New Year. Father, continue to bless us all. Father, be with us in sickness, and Father, be with us when we have death, our families or friends, someone we love. And Father, we just, we just ask you to be with us in this meeting. Father, that elected officials would, would not have hidden agendas, and I don't think any of these five appear ever have, and, but that we would, that we would consider all circumstances when we make these decisions. And Father, that we would get on our knees and pray to you for guidance, because we need guidance from time to time. It's not easy to be up here, Father. There's some hard decisions that have to be made, and, and we just pray that you'll be with each and every one of us in all of those decisions, Father. Now, we thank you that we've got several people to meet, and, uh, I hope that everybody will have a safe trip home. We hope it doesn't get too cold on us, Father. We know that you, you control the weather, you control everything, and we do thank you for that. Now, Father, lead us and guide us, and continue to bless this country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the good and positive for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may have a seat. Well, we're moving into a, a new council, uh, new council person. We've, uh, he has replaced a, a very good friend of ours, Mariana. She is now officially to Virginia. Now, I know I called her that several times through the years, but I think she's officially up there now, gonna be there a while. But, uh, it is such a pleasure, uh, for this young man over here, uh, to, to be here, and we're gonna do a, uh, a swearing in of you with us, and what we normally do is we'll just ask you to go down front, uh, approach your Bible, your family, however you pick it, you want. You may have more room over there, but you choose where you wanna be, and Rob will, will swear at you, swear you.
I can do that, man.
And you can't change mine halfway through. You're here, bud. You want with us.
All right, Wes, I'm gonna read you the oath, and at the conclusion, I'll ask if you do some swearing before, okay? Trace right here. I, Wes Ellers, Assistant of the City of Tipton, Georgia, and being a public official of the City of Tipton and the recipient of public funds for services rendered, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I was in court to defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Tipton, and I will faithfully perform my duties as council member of the city. I am not the holder of unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia. As elected representative for District One, I swear that I have been a resident there for the time required by the Constitution and laws of the state and the City Charter of the City of Tipton, do so solemnly swear and affirm. That's what.
I am, I'm right here.
All right, uh, we're gonna move on into now the election and swearing in of the Vice Mayor.
Okay, if I may, uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I would like to, uh, make the motion to nominate Johnny Terrell as Vice Mayor.
I'll second that. I don't normally second them, but I tell you what, that heads you down on the night of present. I would second that. Now, we move on into the discussion, and I would like this to start the discussion, if I could. Uh, you have been good. You've, uh, you've had my back. There's been times when I couldn't make something, and you, on the spot, were there, and I appreciate that. You've worked hard, not just for your district, but the entire district, entire, uh, city, and, uh, I just think you've done a good job, and just feel like that, uh, that you need to, need to stay on as Vice Mayor. That's my opinion. Anybody here? Chris, you still there?
I am, I'm still there.
All right, well, if no other discussion, we'll, uh, all those in favor, sit if I was saying aye and raising their right hand. And we couldn't see you raising your hand, Chris, but I, I get you, I heard you say aye. So, that is unanimous, that is unanimous. Mr. Mayor. Did you hear that? That's the Lord I called you, Mr. Mayor. Come on over here now, let me go back home.
He has to be sworn in.
Oh, we gotta swear at him now? Oh, Rob, if you do that, you wanna come down here, Johnny?
I'm good.
All right, raise your right hand.
I, Johnny Terrell, Assistant of the City of Tipton, Georgia, and being a public official of the City of Tipton and the recipient of public funds for services rendered, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I was in court to defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Tipton, and I will faithfully perform my duties as Vice Mayor of this city. I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States and other states or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. Do so swear and affirm. How do it?
At this time, we're gonna swear in, I guess I'll swear in, the, uh, the three people, one for Keetip Beautiful, one for DDA, and one for HBC, which is the Historical Preservation Commission. Is Donna Carter here? Donna, I knew you were here, I was like, can you mean it? You don't have to be smart to be elected to the mayor. Uh, Rob, you let me come back there and swear you in, if that was what you wanted. Okay. It's so quiet in here, it's very quiet. I'm gonna read this whole thing, but I've been trying to get them for six years. I've been here in Jordan, but, uh, uh, it'll be what, what I need to read, and, and when I get to the very end, then I'll have to raise your right hand. Right there. I just realized that I'm not bringing my glasses. That's how to use my super, super lens visually. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties as a member of the Keetip Beautiful, of this city, and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tipton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of Georgia, America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless provincially entered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and I shall attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tipton. And after you will, I'll raise your right hand, and I will, will ask you, Donna, Donna Carter, to, 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 I do, thank you very much. Pleasure. Well, I'll do the rest of it up here. Where is, where is Eric?
I don't think she's here.
Erica Johnson? She said I came, I came, I'm bringing it from Brooklyn.
She did not tell me she wouldn't.
Okay.
I will treat that for her tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Uh, William Byrd, you want me to come out there?
Nah. I'm still trying not to do that.
Are you? Okay.
I think so.
Mr. Byrd, you don't have to hold your hand up from the ready board. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties as a member of the DDA of this city, and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tipton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless provincially entered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and I shall attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tipton. And after you will, I'll raise your right hand, and I will, will ask you, Donna, Donna Carter, to, to, I do, thank you very much. Pleasure. Well, I'll do the rest of it up here. Where is, where is Eric?
I don't think she's here.
Erica Johnson? She said I came, I came, I'm bringing it from Brooklyn.
She did not tell me she wouldn't.
Okay.
I will treat that for her tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Uh, William Byrd, you want me to come out there?
Nah. I'm still trying not to do that.
Are you? Okay.
I think so.
Mr. Byrd, you don't have to hold your hand up from the ready board. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties as a member of the DDA of this city, and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tipton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless provincially entered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tipton. So, if you raise your right hand, William Byrd, my friend, I do swear, thank you, sir. Pleasure. Long as, I guess it, if Eric could come here. Chris, you still there?
Still here.
Just can't get ready to come. The blood's on my side, my side of the bed, so I could get you here. Oh, this is gonna be good, this, this next one, y'all. It's gonna be real good. Uh, it's a presentation by ESG Incorporated, Mr. Dan Groce said. Well, let me give you all just a little bit of, little bit of background. Larry called me, God, Larry, it's been over two and a, two years ago.
For what?
And, uh, he said, "Got an idea." I said, "Well, let me hear your idea." I heard his idea, and it was a great idea, thinking outside of the box, that's what we like to do here. And you know what? We all were convinced it was the right thing to do, because we knew a lot of these gentlemen with ESG, and we already had trust in them anyway. And lo and behold, they have started out and done so well the first year, they have brought us what you call a rebate check. And I'm gonna come around and help you hold it, 'cause I understand it's a big check.
It's sizable.
Is it?
Yes.
Well, are you ready to do the thing? We got the check. Where's the check?
I have the check, sir.
Oh, you got the real check. I don't know funny stuff, I don't, I don't know each bit, huh? All right. How you gonna do this? Tell me to be up. Well, I'm gonna be sad.
I'm gonna introduce Dan Groce, and Scott Murphy, they're with ESG. Uh, and if I may, Mayor, just to take a little bit of privilege here, I can't brag on these two guys enough. They have done a super job with our Westport and, and, uh, more professional operators operation, so much so that we've invited them to take over the place in distribution as well, which is just, uh, you know, it's kinda hand in glove type of thing. Uh, they, they do super work with, uh, Dan doesn't get to stay out here with us, but we treat Scott just like one of the department. And, uh, you know, people, when they talk about outsourcing, outsourcing, that they go, "Well, we just, we just got rid of that part of the operation." That's not true. Uh, you still have responsibilities to, um, to take care of providing water and sewer for all the citizens of Tipton. And if there's any way that we can ever save money and operate more efficiently, I think that, uh, what they've done in this past year and a half or so, actually, the check only covers ten months.
That's true.
Uh, if this is any indication of what they're gonna provide for us in the future, then I don't see anything wrong with that, sir.
Let me just make one more small comment, and that's, Dan Groce, Dan, worked here for many, many years in the City of Tipton, and retired, what, about ten years ago?
Yep.
Ten or eleven, ten or eleven years ago. He was a wonderful, wonderful, uh, city employee, and did a fantastic job, and I'll just have to say, this is a chip off the old block right there.
Are you ready?
Let's kinda turn around. I'm ready. I didn't see it.
Are you ready?
Ready.
You need to tell Chris how much money that is, man.
I'm gonna keep it from him. A lot of money, Chris, I'm gonna read it off to you. It's three hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, and you get the eighteen cents.
Oh, my gosh, well, I'll go ahead and say, "That ain't ten to the ten." That is great, that is, that is right up there.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Big thing, Mayor, I might not commit any of that, realizing this isn't a single event, this is a team effort, a lot of people working together and starts, uh, you know, the guys, a couple of our guys from the Westport plant are here, Chanel, Ed runs up the lab, Tommy runs the Westport plant, and he kinda keeps them all at work. Uh, and I can't say enough about Scott. On the same token, Mayor, uh, we couldn't have done this without the support, uh, for the rest of the city. You guys, number one, given us the opportunity. Uh, Larry, as I couldn't ask for a better partner than this, and Larry has, has been such a partner to make sure we had every resource that we needed to be successful, and that links into every other city department. Uh, this isn't just for the ESG success, this is a city success, and I'd like to compliment the other city departments who have helped in making this happen.
Well, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Greg, are you out there? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everybody.
Greg, if you will, just tell us who you're with and...
All right, um, my name is Greg Fonse. I work with the University of Georgia, I'm a Assistant Associate Professor of the University of Georgia, specializing in food and vegetables, and I'm an econ economist by training, but I'm also the Crown Chief of the Shiloh Village in Camero. A village in Camero. I'm the Crown Chief, you can call it the King or Chief or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
I'm the head of the whole, uh, my, my section is about fifty thousand people, and I'm the chief.
That's it.
So, uh, sometimes we disguise ourselves, but that's what I am. A few years back, my, you'll remember, the Prime Minister of my country came here, and we visited with you.
Yes, I met him.
And we went to the City Hall, and we got a key, we gave him the key to the City Hall. Now, the reason I'm standing in front of you all is that every year, my people in the whole United States, we have a national convention, and as you can hear from my accent, I come from, we study the Queens language, so we try to make an ice in the rub it, so you can understand me. If you don't understand me, I'll say it again over and over. My people, we have a national convention every year, and we've always had it in either New York or Boston or Texas, and somehow, this year, they said they wanna come visit the chief. I'm like, "Excuse me?" They said, "We are coming to visit the chief." Now, the reasons are, one, I was born in a small village called Tipton. Actually, it's called Tico, so now we turned it to Tipton. And so, this has automatically become my own country, ever since I came here in two thousand and one. So, they said, "We have never been to where you were born, and we wanna come to Tipton."
Very good.
And I'm like, "Oh, my God," because, because, how am I gonna do this? I mean, they're coming from all over the United States. So, I started scratching my head, I slept for two nights, I couldn't sleep, I started calling people, I called the dean of my university, the directors, I said, "What am I gonna do? I'm in trouble. These guys are coming here." So, I said, "Well, do what you gotta do, give us a taste of Africa." So, my coming here is to come and tell you that my people are gonna be coming in Tipton, July eighteenth to twentieth, two thousand fourteen, and they are coming from all over the United States. I'm talking from different chiefs, medical doctors, all kinds of doctors you can think about, I mean, you, you just go nine yards. And what we wanna do here in Tipton is that, first of all, we are considered the Brazil of Africa. We know soccer, you know, I can move, I can, I can do that, I can do this. So, we wanna have an international economy here in Tipton, where we're gonna bring teams from all over, from Florida, from Atlanta, bring different, different countries in Tipton. We wanna make it an economic thing that we can, people can invest in our community here in Tipton. We're gonna bring all kinds of traditional dances, you guys have not seen what they call Afghani, but you're gonna see it in life. So, my people are coming, and they're coming with different chiefs, different titles, different everything, you're gonna see our regalia, you're gonna see, you're gonna think you are in Africa. But all we need from you is your support. Come and see what we have to offer, to Tipton. We want it to be everlasting, where every day you think about it, like, "Oh, I know these guys from Camero, you've already met my friends there."
Yeah.
And I'm gonna call him and tell him that the people are coming here, and I'm like, "Just this much with you." So, we need your support. We hope that the Lord Mayor will be able to be there and receive these people, or in ten minutes, give them a welcome speech, so that they feel at home, they feel that they are where the chief lives. So, that's the reason why I'm here. We're gonna have traditional dances, we're gonna have the soccer, international soccer tournament, um... It's three hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, and you get the eighteen cents.
Oh my gosh, well, I'll go ahead and say they sent it to the city. That is great.
It is.
That is great right there, P S.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Big thing, Mayor, I might not commit any of that, realizing this isn't a single event, this is a team effort, a lot of people working together in the start, so, you know, the guys, a couple of our guys from the Westport plant are here, Chanel runs up the lab, Tommy runs the Westport plant, and he kind of keeps them all at work. And I can't say enough about Scott. By the same token, Mayor, we couldn't have done this without the support of the rest of the city. You guys, number one, given us the opportunity. Larry, as I couldn't ask for a better partner than this, and Larry has been such a partner to make sure we had every resource that we needed to be successful, and that links into every other city department. This isn't just for the ESG success, this is a city success, and I'd like to compliment the other city departments who have helped in making this happen.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Greg, are you out there? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody.
Greg, if you will, just tell us who you're with and...
All right. My name is Greg Fonse. I work with the University of Georgia, I'm a Assistant Professor at the University of Georgia, specializing in food and vegetables, and I'm an econ economist by training. But I'm also the Crown Chief of the Shiloh Village in Cameroon, a village in Cameroon. I'm the Crown Chief, you can call it the King or Chief or whatever you want to call it. I'm the head of the whole, my, my section is about fifty thousand people, I am the Chief.
That's it.
So, sometimes we disguise ourselves, but that's what I am. A few years back, my, you can remember, the Prime Minister of my country came here, and we visited with you.
Yes, I met him.
And we went to the City Hall, and we gave that key, we gave him the key to the City Hall. Now, the reason I'm standing in front of you all is that every year, my people in the whole United States, we have a national convention. And as you can hear from my accent, I come from, we study the Queen's language, so we try to make an ice in the rub it, so you can understand me, if you don't understand me, I'll say it again over and over. My people, we have a national convention every year, and we've always had it in either New York, or Boston, or Texas, and somehow this year, they said they want to come visit the Chief. I'm like, "Excuse me?" They said, "We are coming to visit the Chief." Now, the reasons are, one, I was born in a small village called Tipton. Actually, it's called Tico, so now we turned it to Tipton. And so, this has automatically become my own country, ever since I came here in two thousand and one. So they said, "We have never been to where you were born, and we want to come to Tipton."
Very good.
And I'm like, "Oh my God." Because, how am I gonna do this? I mean, they're coming from all over the United States. So I started scratching my hair, I slept for two nights, I couldn't sleep, I started calling people, I called the Dean of my university, the directors, I said, "What am I trying to do? I'm in trouble. These guys are coming here." So, they said, "Well, do what you gotta do, give us a taste of Africa." So my coming here is to come and tell you that my people are gonna be coming in Tipton, July eighteenth to twentieth, two thousand fourteen. And they are coming from all over the United States. I'm talking from different chiefs, medical doctors, all kinds of doctors you can think about, I mean, you, you just go nine yards. And what we want to do here in Tipton is that, first of all, we are considered the Brazil of Africa. We know soccer, you know, I can move, I can do that, I can do this. So we want to have an international economy here in Tipton, where we're gonna bring teams from all over, from Florida, from Atlanta, bring different, different countries in Tipton. We want to make it an economic thing that we can, people can invest in our community here in Tipton. We're gonna bring all kinds of traditional dances, you guys have not seen what they call Afrikan, but you're gonna see it in life. So my people are coming, and they're coming with different chiefs, different titles, different everything, you're gonna see our regalia, you're gonna see, you're gonna think you are in Africa. But all we need from you is your support, come and see what we have to offer in Tipton. We want it to be everlasting, where every day you think about it, like, "Oh, I know these guys from Cameroon, you've already met my friends there." And I'm gonna call him and tell him that the people are coming here, and I'm like, "Just watch with you." So we need your support. We hope that the Lord will be able to be there and receive these people, or even ten minutes, give them a welcome speech, so that they feel at home, they feel that they are where the Chief lives. So, that's the reason why I'm here. We're gonna have traditional dances, we're gonna have the soccer, international soccer tournament, um, we're gonna have tours, you know, they eat all the food, they don't know where it comes from, so we're gonna have fun tours, and we have done, when this thing started, we tried to have, uh, an organizing committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Chivas here, and Mr. Duncan is part of it, the Dean of our university is part of it, and we have the African, the President of African Association in Lambda is part of it, so we have three more people, so that we can put all these things into play. It's a lot of work, because we need hotels, we need all kinds of stuff, I mean, Tipton is gonna be jam packed, but we cannot do that without your support, we cannot do that without letting you know that intruders, strangers are coming to your environment. And that's what we do in our tradition, if you come to the university, go and introduce yourself, and say, "Listen, my people are coming, this is who I am, that's why I'm here today to offer you this, and ask and beg if you can spend ten minutes of your time that day to come and welcome the people officially, that would be a wonderful day." And everybody here is invited, everybody in Tipton is invited.
Where will that first, uh, welcome, where will that...
The welcome will be July nineteenth, which is a Sunday, we're gonna have a phone raising gala in the evening, uh, from say six or seven P M., but it's gonna go all night, so there will be dinner, there will be traditional dances, there will be all kinds of stuff, that's where you're gonna see the taste of Africa, you're gonna see all kinds of chiefs, all kinds of traditional dances, all kinds of, everything you want to think about. And where I come from, it's a small place called Cameroon, it's in the heart of Africa, they call it Africa in miniature, that means that if you don't have money to visit the whole Africa, just go to Cameroon. We have the highest mountain, we have all kinds of things, lakes, elephants, we want to go hunting, we want to go fishing, we got it up. And I'm gonna bring those people here, July eighteenth to twentieth. But the occasion itself, the main occasion where we hope we can come and receive our people will be on the nineteenth, which is a Saturday, uh, we are picking between six, and of course, we know you're busy, you can leave anytime you want to leave, but it'll be very good if you receive all these people for us.
And where will that be, you know, yeah?
Yes, it's gonna be, right now, technically, it's in Tipton, the U G A Conference.
Set, set.
Yes. Dr. Wes is also giving, gonna give a talk, but we're trying to sell the program, so that if, whenever you look at the schedule, it's convenient for you, or you can throw it, we're gonna add it to the program and then make the final call, we haven't done the final call yet. And we're inviting everybody, please, come and get a taste of Africa.
Well, that, I'm looking forward to this, I, uh, and I will certainly be there to give the welcome. I had a friend, Theo, in Waikishaw, uh, his daddy was actually a king over in some part of Africa, I don't know if you mind him, but he, I met him when he went to Aback here, many, many years ago, I had a set of apartments, and, and he, he moved into the apartments, nice apartments. And, uh, he really came to like him, he finally moved back over to Africa, and I haven't had any contact with him since then. But, uh, good, good people, and that was a good experience for me, and then when I met you all, it's been, what, two years ago?
What, two, three years or so.
Two and a half, three. And, uh, and I'm just looking forward to coming back and bringing everybody, you're talking about maybe thousands of people?
Yep, we, we don't know for far, but we're looking at five hundred thousand, I mean, Tipton is gonna be flooded.
Well, that's what we want.
It's gonna be flooded with people, and you're gonna see world-class soccer, world-class dancing, world-class everything.
Well, I see, I was showing y'all this is dance, my heart just won't stop. Yeah. Thank you, sir, for telling me, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, if you would appreciate me, um, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Greg. God bless.
Thank you.
And, uh, I, I, I neglected to, Melissa, that you, Melissa, chief. I went to the eye doctor, he said I gotta have some doctor, but you've done something with your hair, so I can't really...
Always changing, always.
But it looks good, where I can see, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Because I won a bar county commission chair, and it does so much.
Happy New Years, everyone.
Happy New Years to you, Melissa. I don't have any other, that's official, though. Okay, now we're gonna approve the council agenda. Uh, Chris, you still there?
I am, I am here, I almost moved to approve the agenda for this.
Good. Got a motion, a second, is it your first second?
My first second.
Put a star by that, that's his first second. That's, put a star by that, leave it in the, in the book. Uh, okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand, see if I'm saying hi.
Aye.
All right. That is unanimous. Now, we come to a time that we enjoy very much, the final of us, it's what we call citizen input. And you recall, y'all are our citizens, you're also our bosses, and I know people get tired to hear me say that, but we take that very serious. We work for y'all, each and every one of you. We're on up here on our own accord, and, uh, so we have time like this, uh, and, is anybody signed in? Nobody signed in. Uh, where y'all can come and speak to us, tell us what's on your mind, good, bad, and different, uh, because we do like to hear from you. We'd love for this place to be totally packed every time we have a meeting. Uh, but at this time, we'll ask for, for citizen input, generally we ask people to sign in, but if you're not signed in, can we ask them if they wanna say anything? Just raise your hand if you'd like to say anything, I'll ask you to come to this podium up here. Anybody got too much money, you wanna give us some of your money? We'll take money. Well, I don't think we're gonna have anybody, and, uh, once again, it's a privilege to see all y'all here, and we'll close the citizen input this time. We have a city manager update from Mr. Larry Ryan, give me the floor at this time, sir.
Sir, my special result, all the council members, you had it before you, uh, real quick, we have some really good news, looks like the master's new city all over the place. Uh, but out of, uh, two thousand, three hundred and eight occupation license ready for permanent, or what have you, we have not collected a whopping eleven.
What?
Eleven we have not, got to be, yeah.
Yeah, mine is. I made mine for you.
This is for two thousand thirteen, these are the results from two thousand thirteen.
Kid, no gosh.
That's pretty, that's pretty...
That is fantastic.
And we gotta get Ron and Justin off.
Man, what are you talking about?
Happy, happy, happy.
Uh, Larry, you do have to tell them that only three of them were watched.
Okay, if you insist.
Wow. That is...
Only three of them, look. All right, Morgan News, we have completed, signed, sealed, delivered, and received the two thousand thirteen audit and financial report, of which you all have copies of, to study, because January sixteenth, our auditorium will be here to present the audit to you, and I might add, this is even more news, it was submitted on time, finished. Thank you, in the slowest love, and your staff. And then, uh, just a reminder for council, I don't know if you're able to sign up or not, that we have the G M A Gas Session Meeting tomorrow in Albany, that's the, uh, new public service commission rules and regulations, we get the all get the play now, they have a training session for elected officials, and then that, then they have a session for the operators, and all of which, uh, our gas staff will be attending, I'll be attending that, uh, so if you, if anyone wants to attend and have not been at the site before, we can probably squeeze you in, but the train will be leaving about eight forty-five in the morning headed to Albany, that's what it'll be. And then, for those of you who may know someone that's not, they're fortunate enough to have a roof over their head this evening, the, uh, Jason Johnson from the Merck's National Agency called this afternoon and said that the South Central Avenue, uh, Community Center will be open, uh, starting at six P M. this evening, at eight A M. in the morning, so if you know someone that needs to get out of the cold, uh, they can go down to the South Central Community Center on South Central Avenue, uh, they have a cot for you, they have water, they're not feeding you anymore, but at least you can get out of the cold and get a glass of water if you need one. And that, Mr. Mayor, is the update for sale.
Thank you, Larry, that was, see, like you said, everything's good. Everything's good. Okay, we're gonna have the, uh, approval of the minutes of the November twenty-first council workshop, December second regular meeting, and the December nineteenth public hearing. You have a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, Kayla, I have a request, uh, for a change to the minutes for November twenty-one.
We have copies of that, or change?
Yes, we do. And it, what it is, is on page two, it's the resolution providing for, um, the pre-application for the funding for the lean water conservation that Patricia Gaskins presented to you all last month, um, and I put in here, it required a fifty percent match, she's requested that that be fifty-one, and when she made her presentation, she did say fifty-one percent, so I just need to request that we change to fifty-one.
Okay. Okay, is everybody clear on all that?
Mayor, I'd like to get that news, show and make that motion to the governor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for the motion for this, uh, approval of the minute.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes as submitted with the change for the November twenty-first workshop minutes as, um, requested by the grant.
Second. I've got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Chris, you still there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, having, seeing no, uh, discussion, everybody in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Item number two, uh, under ordinances, uh, we have, uh, the adoption of the ordinance amending chapter two of the Land Development Code to establish inert landfills as a land use and designate, and designate permitted, permitted locations. To amend chapter four of the Land Development Code to increase the percentage of impervious areas in commercial and residential zoning districts, to increase the side yard setbacks required of cornlofts in commercially zoned districts to provide for an effective hedge. And Mr. Burn, if you will, guide us to this point.
Mayor, this is, uh, has been workshop and presented to the planning zoning, basically using the three issues that we presented tonight in the public hearing, uh, whereby we needed to, um, have a specific designation for inert landfills around them, the heavy industrial, and low wholesale light industrial, also if we talk about, uh, the impervious areas, the commercial zone areas, residential areas, we will reduce those requirements, uh, allow for more, um, areas to be developed, and also the setup, the setback requirements on cornlofts also provides for more ability to, you know...
Okay, you need a motion, okay, all except the motion.
Does that, does that need to be individual, it could be one motion covering all of those subjects?
It's one ordinance.
Okay, I, I make the motion, then, um, that we, uh, approve the adoption of the ordinance amending chapter two.
Thank you, all.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think on that motion, we're amending chapter two, what, the two respects as well as chapter?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let me amend that, then, I'm, chapter two and chapter four as, as presented on, in our agenda.
Chris, can I have a, a brief second?
I will, I will accept that amendment, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, Mr. Ryan. Item number three, discussion of ordinances, uh, Mr. Burke, right, this will be the amending of the B U O for Mill Ridge and B U O for the Oaks subdivision, and I'm sure you can give us the specifics.
Yes, I will, uh, kind of, this copy, just so everybody will be aware, it's just a map, it's copy, actually, piece of paper, question right here, okay? He just had to describe it, just this.
Okay.
Actually, this is probably involved right here.
Okay. Chris, it's a piece of paper, yellow lines, brown lines, blue lines, and purple lines, right at the corner of Mill Ridge and Oak Point Avenue, he has circled a lot, he doesn't have a number, but this is, this is out in the Mill Ridge subdivision, I guess, that's what we're looking at.
Um, we requested, uh, we received a request from both parties that are involved, one, uh, from the Mill Ridge subdivision, one from the development, from, from the Oaks, to allow this particular lot, which I do have a lot number on it, it's one of the probably in here in the earlier discussions, um, that it be basically sold from one to the other. But in doing that, that lot originally was in the planning development overlay for Mill Ridge subdivision, or Mill Ridge Development, it will now be in the Oak, uh, the Oaks planning development overlay, and you can see the, the yellow or the tanish on your map is the Oaks, the pink, hot pink kind of, is the, uh, is actually the, the edge of Mill Ridge, and what basically is that lot that I circled on each of those maps, uh, would actually become part of the subdivision, um, which is called the Oaks, which is actually a, uh, part of Complex's development, it's been in works for thirty years, still has some phases to go. The purpose of that would be to build a, uh, office, office professional type office that will look like residential, uh, that's user, Mr. Buckner here is actually going to build it, and it's, this is kind of a rendition of what it would be, um, it is just a rough rendition, but basically he's gonna keep the design of a house where it looks residential in nature, um, there'll be some, uh, there's a requirement in that area that, uh, part of it has stone front, so it'll have some stone front on it, only thing that'll really be different for them than anything else, is the stacked stone will be around the front, with the fact that basically it'll have three garages, which will actually be for some of the storage for materials they're used to maintain both properties. And the bottom line is that, um, basically, the government is in to build this, this property borders his property already, it would become part of his development, his development was, didn't have allowance in it, in the planning development for an office already, it's just better use of land than use of fixed property. Um, and it would keep a residential feel for the whole area, it wouldn't change the area, it actually borders the area within the Mill Ridge that is for office professional, if you look straight across the street, uh, which would be southbound on your map, unfortunately not in here, is for commercial development anyway, already, so, um, I mean, it's, it's bordering, it is a good use of the fixed property where it sits, the lay of the fixed property, the tax of this fixed property, and as I told you before, if you plan it in common, and, um, it's unanimous decision to allow this swap, for lack of a better word, to occur, because it's gonna benefit the development of both projects, you know, I mean, it will allow for sales offices, well, and rental offices, um, it will also use of this property that's, for lack of a better word, marginal, as far as residential goes, it's a plus power line right there, um, and at the same time allow there to be, um, the use of that property itself. It was unanimous with them, um, it is a recommendation of staff, let this be approved, um, we think that it's a really good use of that fixed property and reduce proposal of this property to continue development.
Burke, that, uh, that's a sign of building, those three products, that's what they'll put like equipment, all equipment.
Well, you know, for, for lawn keeping, uh, for, for something, I mean, they'll have some equipment, just like you probably in your own garage, I mean, based on that.
And that's what they'll keep, they'll be having closed garage.
Just locking the garage door, it's on a house, it's a house garage door, it's gonna be three, it's gonna be, you know, be more like a little storage area in that area.
Yeah, that should be what it is.
And I don't know if you, these might, but, Mr. Buckner, do you have any input that might help with the decision that I made against?
I think you, you could nail around here, uh, keeping the continuity of the, of the development, uh, to be residential, uh, this is a light duty, uh, commercial office, hours of operation, you know, eight thirty to five each day, and, uh, the doors in particular are residential insulated doors, they will not be a commercial grade doors, that'll look like the other doors that I've built, you know, houses I've lived in.
Okay.
Sure, if there were traffic flows, we'd have no problems with that, and increase traffic, just people will be getting there, people that already live there, basically. So, um, we just thought it'd be a good idea to end up promoting the development, it's already ongoing, bang about my brother. Any other questions, anybody?
You found...
I'm very proud of it.
Then did a good job figuring this out. Okay, thank you, Burke. Okay, thank you, Park. I'll entertain a motion, or what Park has just described.
This is, this is basically, we're workshopping that ordinance discussion, we can't pass that into ordinance, we've placed on the Senate agenda. This is, this was gonna be workshop, Mayor, on the nineteenth?
That's right.
For the running, we have that meeting, so we workshop that, basically, discuss it tonight.
That's why I turned you to Park, we didn't have that.
That's why both these, number four is the same.
Yes, okay.
So this is kind of discussing this as a workshop.
Okay, okay. Mayor, you want to discuss providing for traffic control?
Yes, sir. As our ordinance currently reads, we have the authority to control vehicular traffic, but it did not address pedestrian traffic. And so, anytime we have a major event like a football game, or a concert, or anything like that, our police department currently has all the authority in the world to do whatever they can do about vehicular traffic. But there again, if it comes to pedestrian traffic, we don't have that. But this ordinance, this text menu we have before you tonight will allow us to be in compliance with state law, and address public safety issues that relates to traffic control of vehicular and pedestrian traffic, any other issues that are related to traffic per se in the state law.
Just on the manual of traffic control, why?
No, sir, this is, this is total safety issue.
Total safety.
Yes. And that's essentially what that paragraph says that you have before you, Section 7839, public safety in our county ordinance right now. This is just the discussion, all it does is our police department, the authority to manage pedestrian, vehicular traffic.
Essentially, we never have control, we have control of the J-Wall, but then that's an designated area, if it's like a football game or something, you were saying, we don't have control.
I hear your point, sir. Behind the East Street Middle School, we changed the traffic pattern there every day during drop off and pickup hours. And that's part of this, and this is just gonna give us a little bit better clarity from Will as to what we can and can't do in terms of traffic, any kind of vehicular traffic, that's correct. And that does comply with state law.
Okay. We're working on this.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution, just five, discussion of resolution providing for closing Golden Street during certain hours. Mayor, I think you gave us some.
Pass the, you all have a big map here? And then, we have on the screen over there, it's all a little bit, it's a pretty galaxy. We have a request from the Board of Education. A request from the Board of Education to close Golden Street, Golden Street is directed to the west of Matt Wilson's school. And if you look at the map here, this is the school building itself, is the campus, and part of that campus is the gymnasium that's across Golden Street. They requested to close Golden Street during normal school hours. And as you know, right now, they're doing a major upgrade to the campus over there. Mr. Park, I went over there and actually looked at this location. What we have is, this is Nineteenth Street, and in the mornings and in the evenings, what they're required to do right now is, traffic comes down Ridge Avenue, it comes down to Nineteenth Street, and it goes up Golden Street. And it's the same thing in the afternoons, where they do the pickup. And they may have some drop off and pickup up front, I'm not sure at this point. But what they requested from the City of Tifton was authority to put a gate across Golden Street, right here at where Nineteenth Street gets, turns into it. As it stands right now, that's supposed to be a one-way, one-way street during, just like nine-eight Street Middle School, unfortunately, some people choose to ignore that. The other issue is that there are about a thousand children crossing on a daily basis coming across here when they go to gym class. And I verified that with Robbie Dasher from the Board of Education. So what we're trying to do is provide for the safety of these children crossing the street during, during normal school hours, just put a gate across Golden Street and close that off to vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic during the school hours. That way, it gives the Board of Education the ability to control the foot traffic on the campus as well as the vehicular traffic. What you may have known, seen, if you haven't been over there, the Board of Education purchased this house, and it has been torn down. So what they're proposing, the new traffic pattern is gonna be, to come off of Seventeenth Street, come down through the campus, and come around the back of the building, and the drop off and pickup will be on the campus itself rather than out in the street. As they come out of the campus, they'll have an opportunity to go north or south, they can go to Seventeenth Street, the old Olympic Road, or they can turn south. And that clears up, or will help alleviate the traffic problem on South Ridge Avenue and Nineteenth Street where there's room for drop off and pickup. And there's, that's what the resolution is about tonight, is to provide for the opposing of Golden Street during normal school hours.
Let me ask something, Mayor. On this section right here, we're traveling west on Nineteenth?
Yes.
You get back to here, can you go north at the end of this block and come back into this street that's right above them?
Nineteenth Street does not tie into Seventeenth and Hasbrook.
Oh, a lot of them say let's get permanently loaded, because you've got access around here, but if you don't, that's a different matter.
This is a, this is kind of a, an internal measure, if you will, and that will take care of the traffic pattern that we have to deal with out there. It will greatly improve the safety of the traffic in that area.
And you're gonna use those dirty barriers and barrels?
No, sir, we're actually gonna put a chain link gate across Golden Street that will be closed during school hours, right here, tie into the corner of the gymnasium, we come across and tie into the fence on the campus of Matt Wilson. And then, that's what the red lines are, and it'll come down to Nineteenth, cross and tie into existing fence on the Matt Wilson campus.
How safe would that be for the traveling mother?
But then we'll have no trouble whatsoever to see through these gates. There will be, you have typical barricade type marking across the fences, there's no way you cannot see those gates when they're closed.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
And will be in signpost or the fourth of it?
I'm working with Patrick on the logistics and bear line.
There have been some numerous police chases through that area during, during school hours, and I think that would definitely be a very good idea to sell, that cuts the foot traffic during school hour, coming through.
Okay. Okay, leave it behind.
That was also the workshop.
That's working. Okay, at this point, we're ready to go into the other business, and that will be the board report, Ms. Ron.
I just wanted to give, guys, an update, just a reminder, but really to, just to let you know what we're gonna be seeing for the coming year's board report. Just a reminder that we still have, I can see on the tree board, and a couple of I can see on keeps of the year call. But really, for 2014, the first boards you're gonna be looking at are the Housing Authority and the Tree Board at the February workshop. I've given a list from February through December, just for you all to know at a time.
That's the Housing Authority?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I need the, that's my.
That's right, that's right, you're right. We're gonna have three votes there.
I need you to give that to me, through what you can.
But then you're gonna have it for the balance of the year, just, just letting you on that one, which you're gonna be expecting. And, that's all about that.
Well, there'll be anybody coming up on the HBC board, for sure.
Uh, Mr., we actually have four numbers on HBC.
Okay.
Is he asking a question?
Were you asking a question, Chris?
Without God, it's very much right.
Okay, any more questions on the board report? And you give me those housing authority ones. Okay, item seven, the discussion of donation to the City of Tifton, the artwork by Casey Brown. And, Ms. Ron, I sent that to you when I got it. This is Squire Brown's granddaughter, Squire was the mayor back in the seventies, late seventies. And Casey is an artist, I've seen the artwork, and I said to you, saying, boy, this is nice, and hopefully we can do something to allow it, do you have a plan?
I don't have a plan. Your email suggested getting input from council to fully make, before we set the plan. I believe the artwork is a full part.
It's actually a painting of the entrance way. It's very beautiful.
So if you all want to be divided a few days and have any thoughts, then we'll just try to put it all together.
It's just workshop it. Okay, great. Okay. Okay, discussion of BDA boundaries and maps.
Yes, Mayor, we've talked about this on several with the council, I passed out to me, all council, the maps that were submitted previously, I know that Mayor used to have one, and the council was missing one. I think, if I remember right, you and I were kind of of the same mind. But what, what I'm asking you to do is to review the maps that you have, I provided a blank one that has no downtown central business district identified on it. What we would like to do is have you review all of the recommendations that have been made thus far. And then, if the place is council, we would like to have a retreat so that we can discuss the downtown central business district area, if you will, for lack of a better term, as well as the structure of the BDA itself. You may recall, about a year ago, we got into the discussion of the structure of the BDA. We've actually drafted a new ordinance that will address the issues that do not comply with state law. And we would like to also just have that same discussion at the time we're talking about the maps for the downtown development authority area. If it's okay with y'all, we will set that retreat up and put the, and develop the agenda so that we can put this, finally, put this in the bed and go forward with what we need to do.
How many hours do you tell them about this retreat?
Several, we'll be there as long as y'all need to be there.
Well, I'd rather not do a retreat, I'd rather do a workshop. Retreat always costs us money, we have to, we can do a workshop, but we do one o'clock in the morning, come back during the week, and do one o'clock in the evening, and we can opt us out of the retreat type, I'm just opposed to a retreat. Now, we'll take a vote and see.
Whatever y'all wanna do, however you wanna handle this file itself, we just, we just need to get this thing resolved.
And I do, and we mentioned that, I think I mentioned it last week, we enjoy having a little trigger on this thing. So, do we, Mr. Attorney, we need to have a vote as to whether we want a retreat, or whether we want to work this in workshop, different than.
Mayor, I think that it's, it's up to council, we have no consensus, you could vote on it. We have a motion to have a workshop for late serving, or have a motion to have a retreat for late serving, and then vote on it. Mayor, while, you know, one is whispering in my ear, and we have several issues that is gonna take some time, council to address, purely soon, other than just the BDA. So I don't know, quite frankly, I think that, I know you're opposed to a retreat, but we're gonna need some significant time, council to address some, some major issues, so I don't know how much, just for your consideration, so we can break them up in the workshops, but we do have some things that we'll need to address with council, but they take some time, here next.
Listen, I'm the only one that sort of, not wanting to retreat, there may be four others, too. So, you know, I, I, yeah, I, I would encourage us to take a poll here, see what the consensus is, do you wanna retreat, or do you wanna?
Mayor, I don't, we did have a special called workshop for Thursday the ninth.
That's this Thursday?
It was the issues of the sign of it, as you may recall.
Should be on the board's calendar.
I think it is.
Perhaps at that time, we can take a look and see what other issues that we need to have addressed by council, and then make the determination, maybe on the night, if we wanna do that or.
That would be a good idea, that's okay with everybody, let's do it, let's do it.
Let's see, that way we get to what we need, the issues, and you can take a look at and say, how much time do we need, and if we want to try to do today, or do.
Chris, you clear on that? We've lost him. Chris? See now, I was checking back with him constantly, I forget to check with him for a while, he disappeared.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Can we hear you now? Yes, we can.
That's good. I feel like I'm the moron in the dark, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I'm gonna hit my newfound gavel and wake you up over there.
Oh, good.
So the gist of that, Chris, was that we'll just look at each other on the, on Thursday the ninth, and we can discuss this, and then we can hash it out. I'm flexible, I just, I'm breaking up.
That works, man, we'll just do that at our five o'clock meeting, right? It just means a regular time, and just put down the agenda?
Well, yeah, yeah. If that's okay.
That's a discussion. But that's all we're gonna talk about, those.
Okay, that works for me.
What, Ms. Ron?
Whether it be a retreat or a workshop or not.
Okay, that's all we talked about on the left of the ninth, is whether it will be a retreat or.
If that's what you want. So we'll do the signs, and then we'll discuss whether or not we're gonna do the retreats, workshops, and deal with the issue, other issues that we have.
That's right, it's for the signs, it is.
Correct, the signs will take quite a bit of time, man, to be honest with you, probably. If you look at the, the list of issues that Rob sent out today in the morning, it's quite lengthy, and there's very good consensus from any of the council members as to what should be what. So that's gonna take some time, iron out.
I've got an idea how to iron it out, too. I love that Billy can watch us in the middle of the night. I think I know, I would do that one, title by title. Okay. Number nine, discussion of twelve, two, thirteen council meeting minutes, and meeting pro-call as it relates to form of order. You know, I just, I'm not the mood to talk about that. But I might, I might be the only one that's not. I would rather just put that off. That's my opinion, if y'all agree with me, so be it.
I think back on the second floor, I sent everybody an email, we pretty much defined how to handle the points of order, which I think everybody got and reviewed, so.
Let's just, if we can, let's move this to one of those, the lead we're going. Is that okay with everybody?
One, five.
Okay. Item number ten. We don't have an executive session today.
We have.
Does he get paid when we go into executive session?
He does.
That's Bobby. It'll be an executive session to discuss legal matters, and I will need a motion for that, stating that that is the only reason we're going into it. And I'll accept a motion now.
I believe we go into executive session to discuss legal matters.
I need a second. I've got, I've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.